Good. How are you? Are you wearing gloves?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
Be kind.
No, just the gloves.
I'm trying to see if water come on. It won't seem to be able to come off of the cup. Our dog is sitting on the ground leaning like that.
Oh, my.
It's...
Well, we're still setting up the whole firm. You know, I just...
You have to go. Two tubes go.
Okay.
So...
When did you start that?
Weeks ago.
Don't wake me.
I'm sorry.
You have to get... Yeah. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I don't know.
He's worse.
Because they were doing that... On a damn... Sorry, yeah. And I can't even say anything anymore.
Yeah, it's going.
Yeah, by yourself.
All right.
Four tubes.
Oh, my God. Okay, definitely. We can get on this. Get out there first. Okay. All righty.
Huh? How you doing, Rory?
I want to look at the blood show. So your toe.
Yeah, I got him in line here.
It's all over there.
So this is all for just grabbing on here?
Yeah.
So Greg, are you in the parade tomorrow at Castle Valley?
Yeah, we caught a fire yesterday.
You did? Out there?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. What was that, uh...
Lady was mowing. She had a riding mower. Got hung up on a rock. It sparked. Burnt the mower out, but it was really going down when I got there. Uh, but we have it now.
Oh, my.
Couple minutes.
Wow.
How's business?
Yeah, there were twenty-four lanes.
Oh, my God.
Just got to sit there.
Is it near a house ago?
Oh, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
That's true. Two thousand and two, the river was full.
No, no, uh, no buildings involved at all.
And I guarantee it's lower than it was in two thousand and two.
Oh, my. Wow. Oh, I didn't expect you here, right?
They're safe.
I wasn't going to, but I think in response to the last three people...
Yeah, he would know.
He got their way off.
Yeah. Preston would know for sure.
Yeah.
Hi, Greg.
I got your message, Greg. I tried to call you back, but didn't get the answer.
It should be a short meeting.
I did tell him, and I just believe the county's answer.
Yeah, thank you.
It's back from that.
Exactly. I don't lie.
Alternate facts.
How are you?
Good. How you doing, Kurt?
Good. Oh, it's nice out here.
Mr. Vacation himself right there.
Amazing.
Well, that would have been fun. Which countries did you go to?
Just ten.
Oh.
Yeah.
I couldn't point to that if you showed me a map.
Uh, I couldn't. Two weeks ago. It's on the east coast. Is it Boneyore?
East Coast is it? Like North Carolina, South Carolina?
Yeah, exactly.
Or the east coast of Africa? I was gonna guess down by, like, New Zealand and Australia.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Anyway, so what?
Safari. Did a bunch of cultural stuff, too.
So you went to some hunting safari?
No.
Oh. Uh... You know, they're killing those giraffes.
Yeah, and bows and arrows and squirrels.
It's a big trip.
Yeah. Yeah, it was.
What's the, uh...
Um, yeah, it was just...
So...
You have to take harasses.
Great.
Rain, what's that?
Yeah.
Does that mean now?
Not too sad.
That would be very...
I'll send you a picture.
Nice to have you. I still have flowers.
I was gonna...
I was getting back ready to do it.
No.
Kurt's just gonna...
I was gonna read long some...
You wear the same shirt.
It's a little more...
Remember, I'm not using the... It's...
It's good.
It's...
Fortunately, I can't use my computer.
I know. I can't really get used to tablets. I just gotta have one.
I like this. My keyboard is always very...
It's from two thousand and one. Thanks, Ed. Guys, what's this?
Did you get my message?
Yes.
Oh, I left it in my house. They called and tried to talk to you, but...
You see that?
Dude, guys, we're here.
Are you?
She is. Who's that, Greg? Your wife. You're a brave man.
Still too much shit. Too much soul.
What are they doing great? They're getting ready for a report this July celebrating...
Yeah, we gotta think. Well, they gotta think tonight, which is kids can bring home a bicycle. They can decorate them with flags.
That's cool.
You know, the old playing card and the old thing, you know, that junk. And, uh, then in the morning, we gotta make breakfast. And we do a parade at ten. Then they have games that you're gonna play. So you're gonna play this game.
You're gonna do that.
So we're gonna play, uh, uh, we've got a game where you move a soccer ball where you fire it.
Oh, cool.
You know, you have two teams. Each has fire hoses. You're trying to push the ball across the other guy's leg. But of course, nobody's gonna try to hit the other team with their arms.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, it's kinda corny. Straight American and something.
Norman Rockwell.
Right.
Oh.
I would... I would... Yeah, last week it was what counts.
I'd be tired of it.
I'd rather do it against a plane.
It's been determined to be racket.
And then you can get a little tea or something.
I charged you with water, yes?
You said you charged me with water.
So they got rid of the... The mower and school headsets on.
Well, they're kids. Well, they worked on it and got it fixed once. Oh, I don't know about to... Well, we all probably tell you a little about it, so I'm not... So... I urge, like, you take a deep breath. I listen. This is... Ready to try it? It is four o'clock, Tuesday, July third, and we will call this caucus. I almost forgot we were doing the caucus. Caucus, caucus, caucus. I will call this campus of the election to order. Okay. So I'm gonna turn the time over to my election officials, who did a wonderful job with new equipment this year. It turned out great.
So I've given you each, um, the summary of the election results. It's three pages. I've done a few of them there. And then I gave you a precinct level. We have, as of today, printed all of the ballots that were eligible after the election, that were postmarked the 25th or before. Um, we've counted all of those. We've counted voters that hadn't signed the envelope, had sent it in unsigned. Um, we contacted them. We give them until five o'clock last night to come in and sign. We had one or two of those, and we've done all the provisionals. There were ten provisionals. Um, one was not valid as the voter had never been registered in the state of Utah. And they came in on election day, so they have to be here for thirty days. Or they have to register seven days before. So, um, we counted two thousand... Two thousand three hundred and seventy ballots cast. Um, the results are there. Have any questions?
Yeah, on your, um, on your official results, you've got overvotes, undervotes. What are they?
So if the ballot, if the ballot comes back and there's three races on it, and they only vote in two of those races, that's an undervote for the one race.
Okay.
Um, if they come back and they were supposed to vote for one and they vote for two, that...
That's...
And their intent is not clear. If their intent is clear, then we, then we count it. We force... I mean, we can, we can count it. We have to go back in through the, through the system. But, um, usually it's because two, two of the candidates were voted for and only one was supposed to be voted for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then the, then the undervotes would be where they should have voted for somebody and they didn't vote for anybody?
They didn't vote for anybody, yep.
Okay.
And some people, as you'll see, will send in a blank ballot. We have three of those this year. Sent the man, signed their envelopes. Ballots were blank.
That's interesting.
Yeah. So I do have some stats from the 2016 primary. We returned, or we received back fifty-six percent. Um, this year, we received back forty-nine point three-one percent. So pretty close to a presidential primary there.
Wow.
I'll, I'll just make a motion. Um, I move to approve the primary election June two thou... Or, uh, twenty, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, um, for the canvassing of Grand County.
Motion by Rory Paxman?
Second.
Seconded by Patrick Trim. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, we'll call for vote. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a signature page. Yeah, I guess. We have to win a new one and... How about... Yeah. Let me keep working. Thanks, ladies. Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Rory Paxman to adjourn adjourn. Okay, we will now open Tuesday, July third, uh, two thousand and eighteen, Grand County Council Regular Meeting. Uh, Tim, would you lead us in the pledge?
I am the student of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes. We have the minutes for April third, two thousand and eighteen. I move to approve the minutes from April third, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, motion by, uh, Jalen Hawks, seconded by Greg Halliday. Do we have any discussions? Not for me this time. I can... Uh, yes, Rory?
I, yeah. Sorry, I got most angles split right there, but... It says... I was absent. But then it, yeah. I think I can't believe it. Because it says motion to the council of Rory Paxman to approve the consent agenda, so I have to... Probably not for him.
Do you have a... I have in my notes the time of year, so I will not now. Okay. Any others? Okay, approval of minutes as amended. Uh, all in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. I then would like to make a motion to postpone the minutes from April third, May first, May fifteenth, May sixteenth, June fifteenth, June twelve, June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Take a correction to that. Equals seventeen.
Did I say something?
Yeah.
Ah! Okay, thank you. Seventeen. Okay, a motion by Jalen Hawks, seconded by Greg Halliday. All in favor of postponing? Uh, motion passes seven to zero. Ratification of bills.
All right. Ratification of bills for Grand County to be approved for seven-three-two thousand and eighteen. Total bills, six million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Total payroll, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-two cents. Total bills and payroll, six million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion by Rory Paxman, seconded by Patrick Trim. Uh, discussion? Big one was obviously the airport runway. Yes. Oh, okay, I was gonna say, man, that's a huge amount. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jalen Hawks?
Yes.
Evan Clapper?
Yes.
Uh, Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Patrick Trim?
Aye.
Uh, passes unanimously, seven to zero. Um, we are now on general council reports and future considerations. Uh, Greg Halliday?
Now, the big one. Um, I sat in on the museum board, uh, been a week or so ago. Uh, that was, that was good. Uh, one of their big projects gonna be the Old Spanish Trail. Be working on that. Um, they're also, uh, looking at, uh, the future, potentially a new building. Uh, they haven't really kinda nailed that down where they, where they wanna do it yet. Um, also, uh, yesterday, caught a fire in Castle Valley. Uh, it was started by a lawnmower. Uh, lady was on a riding mower. She got hung up on a rock that sparked. Uh, she was lucky to get off the lawnmower in time. Uh, she did hurt her back and ended up having to crawl about a thousand feet to get to a phone. Uh, so that was, so that was something. But, uh, uh, it, it burned an area about eighty feet by about thirty feet in some trees and brush. It burned the lawnmower up. Uh, we had it out within a few minutes of getting there, so it, so it worked out okay. So, and, uh, that's all I got. Thanks.
I went to the Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah meeting, HASSU. Mutual Self-Help Phase Four of Valley View, the Valley View Self, Mutual Self-Help Homes is well underway, the final phase for Grant Nine. And, uh, the final build on that ground is going to take place in Blanding. I believe that three families approved in Blanding to take advantage of that. So that's good to have a project in Blanding. The MAP Senior Housing Project, they've submitted secondary grant applications to both the Utah Housing Corporation and to Alim Walker. They'll be announcing those results probably around the end of this month. And, uh, however, they continue to work on infrastructure for that project because it's covered by the CDGB grant that they got while they're waiting to hear on the secondary applications. Wingate Village, work is progressing slowly. They're working through some sewer connection lines and issues and, um, school district land, just working through the details of that. But at the end of the day, twenty-five units are planned for that project. As part of our regular agenda, we put on a report from the community, Moap Community Land Trust. And they are working towards partnership with some developers called Mountain Lands to develop the first sixty units of workforce housing at the Aurora Crossing. And then the Housing Authority continues to work on deed restrictions. They're looking forward to working with the city and the county and the Moap Area Community Land Trust to work out the details of how that, the deed restrictions would be administered. And are hoping to draft a deed restriction in collaboration with the Land Trust so that neither organization is reinventing the wheel. Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District was the other meeting I attended. The big news there is that the Medicaid reimbursement rate is the highest it's been since the current administrator has been there. It's up from about a hundred and fifty dollars per day to a hundred and seventy-seven-ish per day. Um, that board continues to work through issues like getting a hold of policy, personnel policy, and, um, just basically any policy that they have. Um, and examining more closely the management contract between the hospital and that board, just to see exactly how things are supposed to work and make sure it's working the way it's supposed to. That's all I have. Thank you.
Um, the Sand Flats Committee meeting that was scheduled for before my vacation was postponed because we didn't have a quorum, and there were some, uh, new board members to be appointed. Um, and then yesterday's, uh, mosquito abatement district, um, was also postponed because of members being out of town. Uh, we're just gonna meet next month. Uh, some news from Trail Mix. I don't know if I'm repeating things that have already been covered, but that truck that we had approved, uh, it got sold out from under them. So, uh, they're back to shopping, but, um, Cody's looking for stuff for them, and, uh, they're hopeful about that. They had applied, uh, or requested money during the city budgeting process, and the, the city decided to implement a new model where, uh, organizations would apply for a grant, basically. So the money that they requested has not been awarded yet, and, uh, they're gonna kinda be going head to head against others through an application process rather than just like a standard line item budget thing. Um, uh, the EMS is moving along quite well, and, uh, a strong team in place there. And I think you guys all saw the message about Grand County EMS receiving an award for the Incident of the Year. And that will be, uh, getting awarded this next week, so the kudos to the EMS. And, uh, I think that's all I have to report on.
All right. Uh, since our last council meeting, um, a big chunk of my time was spent in Washington, DC. Uh, county commissioners and the state and legislators were invited to the White House for a conference. And, um, so I flew out on the twenty-first, and the conference was held all day Friday, um, at the Eisenhower Business Building, which is a space generally reserved for business functions of the White House. And it was pretty interesting. We got to hear from, um, most of the, uh, some of the secretaries and directors of different agencies, ranging from Department of Energy, agriculture. Um, we got to spend some time with Senator Orrin Hatch, which was nice, as he's on his way out. Um, we shared the space and time with Idaho, um, but I would say Utah issues kinda, um, carried the day in the conference. It was really, uh, uh, one of the biggest value takeaways from the trip was being able to spend quality time with members of our state legislature. They had the Speaker of the House hosting an event, and so the opportunity to discuss with some of the more urban-focused legislators that we don't get access to was great, to discuss issues from our county, like transient room tax law, you know, things like that. So, um, it was, uh, it was a nice trip, um, and I enjoyed it. Uh, after that trip, um, let's see, I attended performance review here at the county, which that was my first time, um, sitting in on a performance review. And it, it was good. It was good to hear, uh, get down into, um, you know, the weeds a little bit, I guess, just to listen in on how some of our employees are advancing through the, uh, performance program. Um, and so I was glad to get that under my belt. Um, and that's all I have to report on.
On Wednesday, the twentieth, I met with, uh, two people from the Air Quality Control, along with Orion Rogers and Bill Holst and Deborah Barton, Philip Mosher and Jeff Whitney, to discuss the issues with the disposal of hazardous waste such as asbestos. And how to, it was talked about, we were lucky that, uh, the amount of asbestos at the burn site is relatively small, and we're going to be able to deal with it in-house. Orion and Deborah Barton have received the training, and, uh, so that's not going to be the huge expense we were facing for a while. So this is real, that was really good news. We are gonna have to look closer later on, probably this year, at the beginning of next year. Uh, the Housing Department, uh, Bill Holst and Jeff Whitney will be looking at how to make sure we know what buildings and such have asbestos in it, and so that we know how to appropriately dispose of them if they're demolished. So it was an interesting discussion. On the twenty-fifth, uh, we had a cinema court, uh, fire stakeholder building, uh, meeting at the burn site. And, uh, and Bill Jackson agreed to be the point person on cleanup, which was very generous of him to give...
Unanimously, seven to zero. We are now on general council reports and future considerations. Greg Halliday.
Now, the big one. I sat in on the museum board been a week or so ago. That was, that was good. One of their big projects gonna be the Old Spanish Trail. Be working on that. They're also looking at the future, potentially a new building. They haven't really kinda nailed that down where they, where they wanna do it yet. Also, yesterday fought a fire in Castle Valley. It was started by a lawnmower. Lady was on a riding mower. She got hung up on a rock that sparked. She was lucky to get off the lawnmower in time. She did hurt her back and ended up having to crawl about a thousand feet to get to a phone. So that was, so that was something, but it, it burned an area about eighty feet by about thirty feet in some trees and brush and burned the lawnmower up. We had it out within a few minutes of getting there, so it, so it worked out okay. And that's all I got. Thanks.
I went to the Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah meeting, HASSU. Mutual Self-Help Phase Four Valley View, the Valley View Mutual Self-Help Homes is well underway, the final phase for Grant Nine. And the final build on that ground is going to take place in Blanding. I believe that three families approved in Blanding to take advantage of that. So that's good to have a project in Blanding. The MAP Senior Housing Project, they've submitted secondary grant applications to both the Utah Housing Corporation and to Alim Walker. They'll be announcing those results probably around the end of this month. And however, they continue to work on infrastructure for that project because it's covered by the CDGB grant that they got while they're waiting to hear on the secondary applications. Wingate Village, work is progressing slowly. They're working through some sewer connection lines and issues and school district land, just working through the details of that. But at the end of the day, twenty-five units are planned for that project. As part of our regular agenda, we put on a report from the community, Moab Community Land Trust. And they are working towards partnership with some developers called Mountain Lands to develop the first sixty units of workforce housing at the Aurora Crossing. And then the Housing Authority continues to work on deed restrictions. They're looking forward to working with the city and the county and the Moab Area Community Land Trust to figure out the details of how that, the deed restrictions would be administered. And are hoping to draft a deed restriction in collaboration with the Land Trust so that neither organization is reinventing the wheel. Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District was the other meeting I attended. The big news there is that the Medicaid reimbursement rate is the highest it's been since the current administrator has been there. It's up from about a hundred and fifty dollars per day to a hundred and seventy-seven-ish per day. That board continues to work through issues like getting a hold of policy, personnel policy, and just basically any policy that they have. And examining more closely the management contract between the hospital and that board, just to see exactly how things are supposed to work and make sure it's working the way it's supposed to. That's all I have.
The Sand Flats Committee meeting that was scheduled for before my vacation was postponed because we didn't have a quorum and there were some new board members to be appointed. And then yesterday's mosquito abatement district was also postponed because of members being out of town. We're just gonna meet next month. Some news from Trail Mix, I don't know if I'm repeating things that have already been covered, but that truck that we had approved, it got sold out from under them. So they're back to shopping. But Cody's looking for stuff for them and they're hopeful about that. They had applied or requested money during the city budgeting process and the city decided to implement a new model where organizations would apply for a grant, basically. So the money that they requested has not been awarded yet and they're gonna kinda be going head-to-head against others through an application process rather than just like a standard line item budget thing. The EMS is moving along quite well and a strong team in place there. And I think you guys all saw the message about Grand County EMS receiving an award for the Incident of the Year. And that will be getting awarded this next week, so the kudos to the EMS. And I think that's all I have to report on.
All right. Since our last council meeting, a big chunk of my time was spent in Washington DC. County Commissioners and the state and legislators were invited to the White House for a conference. And so I flew out on the twenty-first and the conference was held all day Friday at the Eisenhower Business Building, which is a space generally reserved for business functions of the White House. And it was pretty interesting. We got to hear from most of the, some of the secretaries and directors of different agencies ranging from Department of Energy, Agriculture. We got to spend some time with Senator Orrin Hatch, which was nice as he's on his way out. We shared the space and time with Idaho. But I would say Utah issues kinda carried the day in the conference. It was really, one of the biggest value takeaways from the trip was being able to spend quality time with members of our state legislature. They had the Speaker of the House hosting an event and so the opportunity to discuss with some of the more urban-focused legislators that we don't get access to was great, to discuss issues from our county like transient room tax law, you know, things like that. So it was, it was a nice trip and I enjoyed it. After that trip, let's see, I attended performance review here at the county, which that was my first time sitting in on a performance review. And it was good. It was good to hear, get down into, you know, the weeds a little bit, I guess, just to listen in on how some of our employees are advancing through the performance program. And so I was glad to get that under my belt. And that's all I have to report on.
On Wednesday, the twentieth, I met with two people from the Air Quality Control along with Orion Rogers and Bill Holst and Deborah Barton, Philip Mosher and Jeff Whitney to discuss the issues with the disposal of hazardous waste such as asbestos. And how to, it was talked about, we were lucky that the amount of asbestos at the burn site is relatively small and we're going to be able to deal with it in-house. Orion and Deborah Barton have received the training and so that's not going to be the huge expense we were facing for a while. So this is, that was really good news. We are gonna have to look closer later on, probably this year or the beginning of next year. The Housing Department, Bill Holst and Jeff Whitney will be looking at how to make sure we know what buildings and such have asbestos in it and so that we know how to appropriately dispose of them if they're demolished. So it was an interesting discussion. On the twenty-fifth, we had a Cinema Court Fire Stakeholder Meeting at the burn site. And Bill Jackson agreed to be the point person on cleanup, which was very generous of him to give that much of his time. And Chris Holbert will be pointed, the point person for volunteers and property owners affected by the fire. There's a group of veterans and ex-law enforcement people that will be here on Friday that will be working closely with the team to clean up not only the burned area but the areas in the creek to prevent another disaster of this nature happening. If you have not gone over to look at the site, I don't know how many of you saw it when it first happened. And now it's pretty amazing the progress they've made. And it's been a beautiful example of public-private partnerships of different construction companies in town. And then Monument Waste has really stepped up and given not only a lot of their time but their equipment and such. And so that, it's been pretty amazing. There was a tent set up so that there was, with a cooling system put inside, so there was a place for the, you know, people working to clean up the area plus the property owners to get under and cool off and have something to drink. And the different churches in town have provided lunch daily. So it continues to be a progress that we should be very proud of. Our community has really stepped forward. So on Friday, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, I met with Joel Smith with a Celerynt?
Yeah.
Okay. And Julia Byrne of the Executive Director of Pandora Labs and Stuart Stein, a neurologist, a doctor, PH from Blast Resolve. And they presented an opportunity for us to improve our ambulance services by providing real-time help with treatment of conditions like stroke, brain injury and heart attacks, as well as creating an economic development opportunity in our community. I suggested that we have a presentation in August or September for all parties, the county council, plus the ambulance, the hospital, our economic development department. It sounds like it could be a really nice opportunity for Grand County. So that was, that was really interesting. And you've met with them before. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. On Wednesday, I went to the Utah Division of Forestry, Fire and State Lands and they're in the process of creating a management plan for the state-owned parcels of the Green and Colorado. The state of Utah currently claims ownerships of portions of Green River in Colorado and the ownership boundaries are the high-water mark and navigable waterways. And they are required to consider navigation, fish, wildlife habitat, aquatic beauty, public recreation and water quality. This process, their first draft of the plan should be out in December of this year. It's really important for people who especially recreate on the river or use it and all of us that are water users to go and comment. It's on forestry.utah.gov index, PHP State Lands. You can just easily type in, which is easier, just type in Green River, Green, Colorado Plan. They're taking input. They really want it. And at the meeting, it was obvious we already have some conflict with users. So it's important for people to get on and protection of the banks. So I would suggest to anyone and everyone go and comment on that website if you have concerns about the management of the Colorado Green. And then on Saturday, I gathered with a hundred and sixty other citizens to express our concerns over the policy of separation from the, from their parents. The city presented a proclamation declaring the practice inhumane. Our representative, John Curtis, wrote a letter expressing his support of the gathering and his support of ending the policies. And so it was a, it was a rewarding experience. That's all I have to report.
Well, I had two meetings yesterday. Grand County Obnoxious Weed Control Board. We went over our tentative budget, which we turned in for that. We were discussing it a little bit because we're, we're trying to figure out, we wanted to make sure that, you know, Tim's gotta go do some traveling and we're not really sure kinda how much to budget for that 'cause it's in Canada, so it's gonna be a little bit more this year. So we're kinda, just kinda throwing out some numbers for that. So hopefully we can discuss that when we get a little closer. The other thing, we talked about, a little bit about the Tamarisk beetle, but we'll be talking about that here in a little bit. And then also, we lost our grant-funded person, took another job. So we're looking for somebody. We got a temporary right now. And I think that's about it there. And then out at the airport, it's open. Give you guys a little idea, we put out for bids for the hardstands. So those are out right now. Judd also had a meeting with the BLM to talk about Phase Two, the runway extension. And then also, employment's out there are looking really good. This month, we had a total of two thousand and thirty-two. And last month, we had nineteen hundred and forty. And last month, in two thousand and seventeen, we had eleven and, eleven hundred and ninety. And then this month, last year, we had twelve hundred and nine. So with the two months that we're at right now, if we keep going the way we are, we're forty percent on our way to the ten thousand employment. So they're not, that's all I have.
Thank you. Patrick?
I attended the Recreation Special Services District Board. There's three things that really came out of that. Number one, that there are gonna be soliciting grants upcoming for July. We're not sure what money we have for grants right now. It's all gonna depend on the mineral lease monies that come in. We'll be sifting through those. We also talked about the water situation out at Spanish Trail Arena. If you ever went by there, you've seen it's kinda yellowish-green now. You know, he's watering a couple times at night. Encourage him to water at night, obviously, because it doesn't burn off. He's went to culinary water. And there's been a break from, you know, the water department on the culinary water. And he's got budget money to cover it. But I think we should consider, you know, he's got a CIB request in for a well. It's a commercial well and it's around two hundred thousand dollars. 'Cause I think he's gonna be in this situation, Steve is every year. You know, the more and more we, you know, are in the drought season. You know, Tim's lake is shut off, so he's got no water supply there at all. And culinary waters, you all know, is pretty expensive, so. I might ask to reprioritize that, you know, in October. The last thing is the cell phone tower. I should have something, not this next meeting, but the meeting after. Working on the contract with Steve now. They wanna put a cell phone tower and he's gonna, and I thought it was smart. He's gonna take advantage and put lights up on the cell phone tower so he can also have, use lights to light up the area out there as well as having revenue from that tower. So I'm working with Steve and the company to try to get us a little bit better deal, a little more revenue coming out. But we're looking at about, I don't know, twenty-six a year, maybe, to thirty, something like that, in revenue. So that's it?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I think you did too.
Go ahead, yeah.
One is, how, how often are those fields being used? Are they being used on a?
They're used quite a bit, aren't they?
Pretty much every day.
Every day, from what I understand.
Okay.
They've really opened up their use quite often.
And what types of lights are they talking about? 'Cause I know we're looking at a dark sky and light ornaments and things of that nature. Is that being considered?
Yeah, these are lights to more to light up the grounds.
So they will be directional down?
They're directional down, from what I understand.
Yeah.
When I talked to Steve, there's been a little bit of vandalism out there. So he's gonna put up cameras and things as well. But there's been, I think it's on the concession stand and some of the other places.
Yeah, and I hope announcers will be out there again.
Excuse me, we might, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Greg. I work at the Old Spanish Trail Arena with Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so that's the reason, you know, Steve wants to get some lights out in there and put a few cameras up. 'Cause it's, you know, he's paying for all the vandalism that's happening out there. It just makes sense to me to have some lights that are directionally down. So kind of lights up the perimeter. 'Cause there's a lot of dark spots out there. So part of it is, the cell tower, you could probably put two or three lights on that. You're on top of that in a direction down, right, of course, not out. To be able to keep the area a little bit more secure.
Chris?
Kinda more of a question for Diana, but on the subject of the priority list for the CIB. Where are we at in the cycle, do you know, Diana, with the CIB schedule? We might wanna take another look at that priority list because, you know...
That's a really good point. We've, we've obviously committed, that was like an eight million dollar project? Eleven million dollar project, the ball fields?
The ball fields.
I think the grant from the CIB was eight million.
Two and a half?
Sorry, yeah, but the total project cost. So we've obviously committed to it. I mean, if you're gonna build something like that to let the grass burn up is kinda silly, especially if people are using it.
Yeah, that's why I'm like a certain less, it's people were...
And I think the ball fields especially, I think they've tried to plant grass out there, I don't know how many times, until it actually took. And now if it burns out, then you start from square one again.
Roy?
Yeah, the only thing I'm concerned about is, and I won't be in favor until we get some more bids on that because I don't, I don't think he really spent too much time getting bids. And so I'd like to see more bids on the well before I would ever approve anything out there.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think he was just trying to get an estimate. What I understand, the well is typically around seventy-five grand for a commercial well out there. But if you don't hit it, then you gotta drill again.
Right.
If you don't hit it, you gotta drill again. So what he's, I think what Steve's doing is throwing in some contingency money. 'Cause if he goes in for seventy-five and doesn't hit it, yeah, right? But I think that's part of them.
Yeah, we've got plenty of, I know we need to move on. We have plenty of local drilling companies to where we ought to be able to get, you know, at least three bids.
Do you remember how much the well that they built just were unsuccessful at getting water in Castle Valley cost? To me, it was, it was a lot.
Yeah, well...
Sixty-five?
No. When I was, when I was talking to the fire department, they were, they were, they were telling me that the fire department was on the hook for twenty grand.
So that's how, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then, so whatever, whatever the, I expect that was a fifty-fifty split between the fire department and the, and the town. So, I mean, it, I mean, we're looking at forty grand, so that, so that wasn't that much.
Depends on the debt problem, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, he went down two hundred feet. And they got some, but not enough.
Didn't blow fast.
I would just like to have somebody else rebid.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Did anybody forget anything that needs to be put on? Thank you. Very true. Any elected official reports? I don't see any elected officials out. Our county administrator is not with us this evening. Department reports, two thousand and seventeen North Area Travel Council Department. Elaine. Thank you.
Elaine Gisler, and I'm the Executive Director of the Millam area Travel Council. And I have a recap, which you should all have in your paperwork. I didn't wanna bore you with a PowerPoint presentation, so just kinda run through the numbers very quickly. The first thing I wanna say is that the Travel Council abides by the state code, strictly by the state code. And the Travel Council does have a board and, which is a tax advisory board. So anything budgeting-wise that is submitted for a year is approved by the Travel Council Board and then is submitted to the county council. In most recent weeks, we've had a lot of negativity coming through the newspaper and directly to me. And last Friday, I was verbally accosted along with my assistant by a local who was not so pleased with tourists. And so things are getting a little worrisome. And, but I just wanna say that if people have concerns, questions, they need to write letters to the legislators and express their concerns. You know, calling the Travel Council and just coming at the Travel Council with all the negativity isn't really gonna solve anything because we are following the law, we're following the rules and we have been for all the years that, even, you know, prior to me coming on board. So I just wanted to kinda get that out of the way. Arches visitation last year was slightly down three percent. We had a million five people that entered the park. Canyonlands National Park visitation was down four percent. They had seven hundred and forty-two thousand plus. And Dead Horse Point visitation was five hundred and sixty thousand plus, so they were up, they had a really great year. The Moab Information Center visitation was up three percent. They saw over two hundred and eleven thousand people there last year. And I would encourage everyone who can to get down and see the brand-new movie. It's in 4K. It's absolutely spectacular. And our office partnered with CNHA to produce the movie. So it's, it's really great and everyone should, should go down and see it. The Thompson and Welcome Center visitation, which we manage, was down. They saw fifty-seven thousand people and they were down four percent. TRT collections in Grand County amounted to five million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and seventy, which my understanding is they're not exactly the audited numbers. Grand County ranks four, number four out of twenty-nine counties. And you should have this sheet in your packet that gives you information since, from two thousand and fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, where Grand County ranked number four. Number one was Salt Lake County, number two Summit County, three Washington County, four was Grand County and five was Utah County. So we continue to keep that ranking of number four out of the state. Smith's travel report for occupancy for two thousand and seventeen. And this doesn't include independent hotels, but it's a really good cross-section of information. Our occupancy percentage was sixty-three percent in two thousand and fifteen and we're now up to almost sixty-six percent in two thousand and seventeen. The average daily rate went, was one twenty-four, forty-two in fifteen and then we ended up, two thousand and seventeen, at one forty-five, eighty-five. Lodging available in Moab, we have two thousand four hundred and fifty-six rooms and that includes the Hyatt Coming Online and the Hudu. Property Management operates three hundred and seventy properties. We have individual condos that are managed, our one oh four, guesthouses forty-three, bed and breakfast seventy-eight. Commercial RV sites are seven hundred and eighty-four, which does not include any BLM sites. We have a hundred and forty-two cabins and two hundred and eighty-three commercial tent sites. The average total visa spend in Moab from domestic tourists, that's everybody outside of eight, four, five, three, two, spent a hundred and thirty-three million, seventy-two, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars here in our community. The average cardholder spent roughly one seventy-two, eighty-eight. And the originating cardholder spend by area came out of Denver, Boulder, Provo, Orem, San Francisco, Oakland, Los Angeles, Riverside and Orange County, Seattle, Tacoma, Phoenix, New York, Grand Junction, Washington, Baltimore. The top segments by market came in at restaurants, oil, other retail lodging, supermarkets and other travel and entertainment. Top merchant categories by spend were eating places and restaurants that garnered twenty, almost twenty-nine million, automated fuel dispensers, nineteen million, lodging, nineteen million, grocery stores and supermarkets. Automated fuel dispensers, nineteen million, lodging, nineteen million, grocery stores and supermarkets, eleven million, service stations, four point three million, tourist attractions, three point eight million, gift card novelty stores, three point three million, fast food restaurants, three point three million, sporting goods, two point nine million, and hardware stores, two point eight million. On the international spend, it was ten million. I don't have the two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen was ten million thirty-five. And Canada, France, Germany, China, U K, Switzerland, Italy, Belgium and the Netherlands were the top countries. We are, uh, moving forward and it looks like we're going to have another successful, um, year with T R T that we were trending. So we're very hopeful that we'll be able to continue to bring in the five million dollars to the county. And, um, we're tracking it and it looks like we're going to be there. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
This is gonna, I've got a lot of stuff I want to dive into, so. Robert's Rules of Order allows me ten minutes, so I'm going to watch the clock. Well, the first thing I want to tell you is that, you know, you're in a, as you know, you're in a difficult position because you're tasked with promoting tourism in a community that is seeing increasing volumes of tourism in the last decade. Then it's not a representation of our budgets or our infrastructure. But I want you to know that I support you. I understand, uh, the, the dynamics are at play. It's important for the members of the public to know that this council, you know, long before I ever showed up, is doing everything they can within the confines of state law to use T R T money to mitigate the impacts. And that's something that, that has happened and will continue to happen. But there is such a thing as over-commercialization. And, you know, that's the conversation that, you know, I think we're getting into is where do you draw that line? And, you know, some statistics that point out to me that I think are really representative of just how heavy the burden is. So Grand County ranks fourth in the state for county transient room tax. Utah County, where Provo is based, one of the larger, uh, populated areas in the state, are behind us at fifth. That's with B Y U. That's a beautiful area. Washington County is, uh, only, uh, twenty, excuse me, two percent points higher than us in state, uh, county transient room tax. And that's a third-class county with Zion National Park. And they have other facets of their economy that we don't. They're a large retirement community, people visiting their relatives. Uh, it's, it's much more of a well-rounded economy and, and a larger, uh, uh, tax base to manage these things. And so we really are strapped. We're a, we're a two-hundred-pound person with, with a bone structure and a muscle structure that's, that's, of a two-hundred-pound person that's carrying the weight of a four-to-five-hundred-pound human being. That's a fact. And it's important for us to acknowledge that. And there are segments of this community that are, it's, it doesn't fall on party lines that would like to see some preservation of the valley and would like to see us proceed in a sustainable fashion. And this is where, you know, we came to blows, uh, last year over the transient room tax. And you had a, a debate filled with vitriol and finger pointing over a state law that no longer represents or allows for the flexibility needed for a fifth-class county like Grand County to manage this volume. So I think one of the most important things that we can do, and that I think you should take to your board, is we've got to come to a compromise on that state law. Because there's going to continue to be efforts to build out flexibility in that law. And I think that is just a sharing and acknowledging of facts that we don't want to lose. Tourism has serviced us well. You guys, the, the tourism marketing, uh, folks have done a phenomenal job. It's, it's done really well for our economy. But, uh, there is such a thing as quality over quantity. And, you know, this, the community, the, the elements of the community, they're getting frustrated. They're not just Democrats. They're not just Republicans. They're not just generational locals. They're not just transplants. It's a group of people that see the most beautiful place on earth getting sold out. So, you know, that's the starting place. If we can shake hands on, how do we amend this law? So that we have the flexibility of the governing body to scale back marketing in years when the, when the tourism volumes are up. And if we start to, to lose market share, then to dial that promotional money up. And I think, you know, these, these T R T volumes are going to continue to go up. San Francisco is, uh, excuse me, you've got them at?
They were, okay.
Third? On, on dollar spent? So we just invested in an airport that could very well connect us to San Francisco, you know, in a few years. That's one of the, the possible. So the people are going to keep coming. And, and, uh, if we're dialing back promotion during peak season because we don't need to, and, you know, the more the volumes go up in transient room tax, we realize we have more to mitigate on our side. But, you know, at what point does the back break on the two-hundred-pound man? And that's not your fault. And that's what people need to understand is you, you have a job to do. You're a tourism marketer. The state tells you how much you have to spend on this. You know, it's, it's often not a good idea to, to pass a tax and say, we're going to give the taxpayer control over exactly how this spent because what you have is you have a public marketing platform. And so I think just honesty is what's important in this conversation. And I think a good starting point is that law. Because the reason why there had, there's been, uh, this is a situation that's unique. And that's, you know, why I reference, you have Moab that is bringing in more transient room tax revenue than Utah County, which is a second-class county. It's one of the big four. So it, it, it's a two-way street. People need to tone down the vitriol and, and realize that we have, uh, legal confines that we're working around to try to provide for a taxing system so we can take care of the infrastructure. But this idea that there's people in this chamber and people in the travel council that are blind to it and they're just promoting us to death is not real.
And, and we don't promote during the May, uh, April through October time period. We don't run any ads on TV, on radio. We do, we cut out all the advertising during the, the peak seasons and we focus on the shoulder seasons to build those times.
Not to interrupt you, but I gotta manage my clock here. Where am I at? But the-
Six minutes.
Six minutes. All right. Well, we're just getting started then, Elaine.
Six minutes.
But, but, but the debate is, or the question is, is would you, would we be better off as a community instead of trying to force those people in the shoulder to put that into EMS, to put that into the infrastructure? I think that's, if we, if we don't need to promote during the peak season, tourism is a cyclical economy. The shoulder seasons have, seasons have becoming, uh, rounded, but the weather's been great during the winter.
Right.
And this is part of the problem with the reservation system is it's this idea that the park service is going to play economist and be the first people in the history of tourism to round out a tourism economy, which I don't agree with. But with that, would we be better off in advertising Christmas in Moab? That makes sure that money gets into the community, gets into the streets, into the infrastructure, can, can compensate our sheriffs, our EMS?
Well, we already do. Two million from the budget goes to the sheriff's department, but you're talking about taking it from the, the advertising budget.
This is the name of the game in a resort economy. The reason why the city has done so well is they're a sales taxing entity. And that is a taxing behavior that better monetizes tourism than property taxes. I don't want to raise property taxes on the locals that are here working. If the tourists are coming in here and they're dropping plenty of money, I want to have a good handle on that and making sure that they're paying their fair share. And if the state won't allow for us to define what's their fair share, I think it's fair for us to have an issue with that. And they just don't understand that. The law reflects a mechanism that's meant to stimulate a tourism economy and grow it. We're grown. The, the fertilizer did its job. We're, we are healthy. We're mature. Uh, and if, and if that money continues to roll in, we don't want to ruin the tourism, tourism economy.
Careful because that's what happened to Colorado.
Yeah, there's precedent for turning the valve off and the, and the, the economy going away.
Right.
But I'm, if I was a betting man, and I am, we've sold Delicate Arch across the world, uh, you know, since the nineties and we're doing really well by it. It's on the Utah Jazz jerseys now. I mean, it's a cool thing. Every politician that's run for office in the last ten years has Delicate Arch on their campaign sign. And so that is defining Utah. And, and look at, they're coming in from everywhere. They're coming in from San Francisco. So I, that's, instead of us digging in our hills, this is my last statement, and saying tourism is what makes the county go. And then the people on the other end say, we want no more tourism. When I ran for office, which was two years ago, we were still arguing over mining and tourism. And now it's shifting. And the people that argued for tourism are anti-tourism and it's, it's a crazy thing.
But there's a civil way to do that by going to the legislature and, and addressing that, not being, hostile and angry and threatening to our office.
That's right. I agree.
That is, believe me, that is, is a very uncomfortable situation.
And I think it's our responsibility, you have a liaison from this body to make sure that we are standing up and saying, look, we're not going to scapegoat our issues of, of poor planning and poorly structured laws on the people that we employ in that little metal building around the corner that are, that are bound by the laws. It's important that we're educating the public. Like some things need to change. This is a unique case. We're working to do that. But the ugliness, the vitriol, it needs to stop. But what helps us bring people together is we've got to come to a compromise on that law. I don't see any way around it.
And I don't disagree, but the portion of the funds that we're using, um, to, uh, educate, we're, we're producing educational videos to get out to tour. We just did one on biking, canyoneering. I have somebody in here filming on, Mary, you'll be thrilled, U T Vs. I have Jim Winder being interviewed. We worked with all the agencies, the B L M. I mean, we're working with all the agencies to talk about, um, you know, motorcycles and U T Vs and what, how you use them out on the trail and what about being in the city? That's all being filmed this week. So we're taking a lot of those funds and utilize, trying to utilize those funds that we wouldn't put into advertising into educational, um, pieces that we can push out via social media on our website to say, this is how you need to act. You know, this is how we'd like you to be when you come in. We're also working on a, um, Moab Outdoor Recreation Guide. We're working with all the agencies, Sand Flats, B L M, you know, everyone to make it a, um, more informational educational piece. So, you know, we're trying to approach it from that standpoint of not just people in the community think we're out there and we're just running ads all the time on K S L. Well, we're not. We're doing a whole lot more than that. And I don't disagree with you, but I think that they have to take the stand that they're going to approach it by writing their, you know, their legislators in the, in the state and explaining to them that they want the law changed. And that's fine.
But if we can, my last statement, manager, if we can agree on a compromise here in Grand County and take a unified message to the hill, that's, that's a stronger currency than everybody politic.
And I think that's a good idea. I think between now and January, we as a body should work closely with our travel council and come up with what we think would serve a mature, rather than a fledgling, uh, tourist economy. Cause they're, they, they should be treated differently. Cause the needs are very different. When Moab first started to become a touristing, uh, economy, we needed that much money put, you know, of the transient room tax. Now, you know, it could be changed. And I would like to propose we get a letter or a column to the newspaper saying that, uh, explaining that we support, you know, something that says that we are not comfortable with people attacking employees for doing their job the way that they're required to do their job, or some way communicating that to the public. So I would look, you know, we could do something like that.
I appreciate that support because it's, um,
It's horrible.
It, it is horrible. I mean, it's, it's very frightening today when you have, um, people who are so volatile. You know, and you're experiencing that. And believe me, I'm not paid enough money to be, to, you know, to take on that kind of, uh, anger from people. It's really frightening.
And they don't, you know, like, they, you know, the travel council does never mentions anything about Mill Creek in any of the ads.
We act like it doesn't exist. We don't want to talk about it. We don't want to feature it. We don't say, people call about it. We do not give them directions. We say absolutely nothing about Mill Creek.
So, you know, there, you know, there's, those type of messages need to get out. Do we have anybody else from the council that would like to comment? Yes, Jane.
I just have a simple question, but first I will thank Curtis for his very appropriate, timely remarks. My question's very simple, Elaine. I'm, on the visa spends, is that after people get here or does it include reservations that they may have made beforehand?
No, that's everything that would actually appear on their credit card that they would pay, that they would pay on their visa bill. So it would take-
To a local entity?
In other words, if they're coming here and buying, shopping in stores or going to restaurants and it appears on their card, that's everything that they would spend in. But it doesn't include any eight, four, five, three, two people that live here.
Thank you.
And we're only getting that information just from the visa folks?
Yeah, I have to purchase that information. And we never did before. And I purchased it because I want to track the statistics. So we purchased that and we purchased the, um, the Smith Travel Retail Report that gives me the occupancy for the hotels. Mostly chain hotels because independents don't subscribe to. There might be a couple that subscribe to travel, uh, Smith Travel Retail. So, but that doesn't include American Express, Mastercard, Cash, um, any of the other credit cards that are out there.
So why did you pick Visa?
Because Visa's the only one that, it's the only one that we can purchase that information. I'm sure others, I just heard that, um, Mastercard might be coming online because the state purchases from Visa. And then I purchased our information from, from Visa. So if Mastercard comes, then we'll purchase that because it helps us to track for the local businesses to give them an idea how, how, how things are trending and for us to monitor what we're advertising. And where, you know, from outside of our community, where are those dollars being dumped into? So we can look at our, our R O I and our spend and our statistics.
So, so would it be realistic to say we could, we could take those figures from the Visa and times them by three, four, or something to get, to get a more realistic?
No, I wouldn't say that because Visa's probably the number one, maybe.
Is the biggest one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say maybe two and a half, but I wouldn't go any higher than that.
Okay, yes, Curtis?
I just want to thank you again for putting this data together. This is allows for a really comprehensive look at, um, tourism statistics, obviously, because it's a big issue. Having the facts are important.
And, and my counterparts are all having the same, we're all in the same boat with, um, tourism. I mean, every park in Southern Utah, we're all faced with the same challenges. Zion, Bryce Canyon, Capitol Reef, we're all having issues. So it's not anything that we're just experiencing over here and it's, you know, different. But it's, it, the whole state, because the, you know, tourism brings in over eight billion dollars a year to the state of Utah. It saves every taxpayer about twelve, household about twelve hundred dollars a year in taxes. So the state itself of Utah relies very heavily on tourism. So, um, you know, until we can diversify in our community, and I have to say that as an outsider, uh, coming here and being at the travel council for three years, that over the years in this community, the, um, the, the commute, the leaders of the community didn't really look at the trends, uh, to see what and, and how it was and plan ahead. And that is, uh, didn't have a strategic plan. You know, when you have a private business and you see your business esco, increasing ten, twelve, you know, percent and you have to alter your manufacturing, adding on your sales team, uh, bringing in more product. on your sales team, bringing in more product, you know, upping your production, blah, 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 our community as a whole, and I'm saying this as an outsider, having been in business and managing large companies, was never done to look forward to look to affordable housing, you know, to look to all of these, the infrastructure. So as a result now, we're already here, and the local community, the local people have suffered because the proper planning, you know, strategic planning wasn't done years ago. And I would hope that if the funds do get shifted, that I would challenge you to say that if you're looking at shifting the funds or the state shifting and allowing the laws to be changed, that first, we have to look at what the strategic plan is for this community going forward, so that we can agree that it is the right plan for this local community, because it hasn't been for all these 20 years that the tourism has been escalating and growing. And, you know, sewage treat, lack of a sewage treatment plant, and hotels keep building. And just want, lack of affordable housing, but we keep, you know, we're not, and that's where the local community does have a right to be upset, and I don't blame them. You know, people that have lived there for 30, 40 years, pioneers, their families that came here. So I understand. It's just that I think we have to say, you know, we did it wrong that way, but going forward, here's our strategic plan for the next, for diversification of business, affordable housing, and infrastructure and everything else before we decide, you know, whatever it is that we're going to do. So thank you for letting me be on my soapbox.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't have any agency reports, correct? We are to the portion of our agenda for citizens to be heard. This is the portion where citizens who have something they want to say that is not on the agenda have an opportunity to speak. If you want to speak to an item on the agenda, please fill out one of these forms that are on the back next to the door and hand it to Diane, and she'll get it to me. And when we get to that agenda item, I will call on you. But this is the portion of meeting for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. If you have something you would like to share, please come forward. You can sit at the table or the podium. Tell us your name and three minutes.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks. My name is Joanne Savwa. I'm a property owner in Angel Heights since 1984. Have lived here since about, well, seasonally started in about '76. I also speak for my husband, James Pharoah. We are property owners there. And thank you for letting me speak to you. And it was really, really informative tonight. You do a lot of work, a lot of work. And listening to Elaine's report answered some of my questions I had, but I came with four things to say related to the housing crisis, and maybe that's on your agenda, because it's on every agenda these days. But I chose citizens-to-be-heard portion of the agenda. First, we object to the proposal for the high-density housing incentive overlay in our neighborhood. I also speak for many neighbors. We've been going to a lot of planning zoning meetings and meeting with Zachariah as well, and so we have been working on this. This incentive would seem to benefit developers and not really solve the lack of affordable housing. Rather, it would create opportunities for more part-time residents and take off the market acreage that is currently available for agricultural and farm animal use. Our neighborhood is currently zoned rural residential agricultural use, one acre, one unit. Although I noticed in the land use code that it's currently available for duplex in one acre in our zoning. So that hasn't really been incentivized or pushed or developed that I'm aware of, because I just became aware of that recently. We like that our neighborhood has horses and vineyards and safe rural streets without sidewalks, without streetlights. And hopefully, we won't see those ball field lights, which I currently do see in my neighborhood. We don't view the density as an improvement to our neighborhood, rather a detractor. Secondly, I encourage council to say no to more overnight housing in the highway corridor. This is where the zoning should happen to create apartment-style housing and local business development. It seems the greatest need for housing is for seasonal workers. With the current wages, as constantly advertised in the papers for jobs, low rent is required, not mortgages, in our need for housing. Thirdly, I encourage council to adopt the assured housing policy, the fees based on the numbers of employees development would bring in. I am not creating more need for workers, but all around us, we know that there is more need for workers. And as we all know, we don't live in an area where workers can drive to work here. We live in a very finite worker-based community, so that is really strapping us as we heard. Perhaps that horse has already left the barn, though, since there's, rumor has it, five more hotels to be built. And maybe they wouldn't fall under an assured housing policy that is yet to be drafted. And fourthly, I encourage the council, and sorry, Elaine, but I do encourage the council to say no to more promotion for Moab, when the high volumes of traffic and the uncertain water futures, which is a big one, that we, you know, drilling more wells. I have a well. I also use culinary water. My culinary water is really fluctuant, you know, it fluctuates a whole lot. And I can concern that my well will get drawn down by the increase of drilling wells in that same aquifer. So, yes, the lack of housing, all this is burdening local lives.
We have to ask you to draw to a close if you can.
Okay. My last thing to say is, what is the face of Moab now? It used to include rural living with orchards, farms, splendid scenery, and outdoor adventures. Are we still selling part of that to anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? We are at our first presentation, presentation on the Tamarisk Beetle, an 11-year summary. Wright, Robertson, and Tim Higgins.
Well, I've been asked to give you a brief presentation on another visitor who comes in and out of the county, also has given us national recognition, and that is the Tamarisk Beetle Project, Grand County's Tamarisk Beetle Project. I'll keep it pretty brief. Does this advance the...
No.
Oh, okay. So the big question is, why would we use Tamarisk beetles? Well, can you put that back up there? If you may have advanced the slides, it needs to pick up the screen, or they won't be able to see it. I can run it with this. Can you say that? Okay.
I don't know. I'm not a reporting person.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead. Go ahead. You can talk.
Well, I'll do that.
You can do it. You break there. Uh huh. Just press that.
So the big question is, why have we bothered to use beetles? We can cut tamarisk, but within two weeks, we're back to this. This was cut over at Bill's site. We can earn tamarisk. Within a couple of weeks, we're back to this. Within one year, they were seven to eight feet tall. It's a lot of cost and a lot of labor. This was cut and burned. Combination of, a year later, this is what it looked like down near the potash plant. We can control tamarisk with herbicides. If you think of a tamarisk plant, it has a taproot, and at the top of the taproot, there's something called a root crown. And if you don't go down to the root crown and cut below it, it's going to keep putting up shoots. That's how tamarisk survives. So when you cut, when you burn, they love it. It clears the competition, and they'll send up new shoots. This works. In the foreground, we cut the stumps, sprayed them immediately, and the chemical went in and killed the plant. Behind that man is where we cut the stumps and did not spray. One year later, you can see the difference. The green in the foreground is not tamarisk. It's poverty weed and grasses. So the herbicides will work, but we don't want to spray the whole county with chemicals. Beetles control tamarisk naturally. Beetles will overwinter in the leaf litter. The adults will come up. They'll feed. They'll mate. They'll lay eggs. From the eggs, you get the larvae. And the larvae will start to feed voraciously on the plants. And we have all seen the results of the beetles. So the beetles got a chance. In 2004, Grand County approved the use of tamarisk beetles to control tamarisk plants. The beetles were released in 2004, '05, and '06. Roughly 10,000 adult beetles were made with every release, and we had anywhere from one to three releases per site. So anywhere from 10,000 to 30,000 beetles. The green dots along the Green and Dolores, I mean, the Green and Colorado River show where the county released the beetles. Two red dots on the green are where landowners went and got beetles and brought them to their property. We don't know how many, and we don't know whether they were larvae or adults. In 2005, a year after the first release, the total browning in Grand County was less than two hectares, about five acres. If you look at the middle center bottom, you will see a yellow flag. That's Williams Bottom. The browning at Williams Bottom the second year was that. Remember that spot?
That's just...
That was part of the browning in the county. In 2006, we estimate 400 hectares had been browned. And you can see black flags moving downstream away from Moab, away from Williams Bottom. By 2007, 4,000 hectares had been browned. You can see they're moving up the Colorado River and up toward the airport. The beetles are moving now. By 2008, everything cuts loose, and the whole county is inundated where there are tamarisk, there are beetles. So from 2008 to 2013, we continued to monitor these beetles, and 650,000 hectares is around two-thirds of the size of this county. It took everything. Tamarisk don't grow above 6,500 feet, so you got a knocker to sections of the county that are in the book cliffs and in the lasalle's. But wherever there are tamarisk, there were beetles. That was 2008 browning at Williams Bottom. That browning went below the potash plant. That browning went above Dewey Bridge, and it's both sides of the river.
Question. When you say browning, does that mean the plant is actually dead?
No.
Or just stripped of green?
Good question. When the beetles do this, they're not feeding on the leaves. Those are the leaves. What they do is they open up the leaf and drink the sap, basically. So by exposing a lot of the leaf to, you know, desiccation, it causes a lot of the plant to go down. They scrape the branch, and anything above that will brown. So that's how the browning is so extensive. They're not sitting there feeding on every piece of leaf. So the plant can't carry on photosynthesis, so it's drawing on roots. It's got storage in the roots, but it's not photosynthesizing. Good point. So then the plant has to put the green back on to try and remake food through photosynthesis. When it can't do that, it's on a perpetual diet, and eventually it dies. And I'll show you in a second. You'll see something. So what we found with the data we collected, this is just three years, 2009, '10, and '11, you can see that the adults come into the plants. They mate. They lay their eggs, and then the black lines start to go up. That's the larvae. And when those larvae take off, there's a critical mass that they reach, and all of a sudden the tree crashes. When the pressure from the larvae comes off, then the tree greens up again. Some do, some don't. That's the point of this study. Why does that happen? But you can see every time, once those black lines start to drop down, the green will take back up. Are the beetles doing the job? This was a release site in 2005. 2008, those trees should be green. 2010, they're falling over dead. We started seeing this all over the county, and we also were seeing this willow growing up through the tamarisk. The tamarisk is the beige stuff. Can't photosynthesize. Light is able to get down into the ground, and the willow comes up. Now, real estate is shifting from tamarisk over to willow. And a lot of the green you see along the river today is willow, prizet, other plants like that. So in 2013, we started doing these mortality studies, and we had 80 sites across the county. There are blue stars on here. You can't really see, but there were 80 sites with over 1,000 off-highway miles we had to drive in order to access these sites. And we conducted mortality surveys to see if the beetles were actually, you know, destroying the tamarisk. At the end of that season in 2013, we produced bar graphs at each site showing percent dead versus percent green. And this was what we came up with. There's a lot of, there's a lot of dead. Dr. Anna Shear joined us in 2013 and gave us the methodology, the protocol for sampling, to see if the beetles were working in 2013. In 2014, she sent a graduate student over here on her PhD dissertation work, and they came up with a hypothesis. They wanted to find out what was going on with these beetles, because we had this massive data set, and they wanted to figure out what they could make sense of. So they said, "Tamarisk defoliation will follow a downstream pattern." It had done that in other places. "Will be greater whether beetles have fed longer." That makes sense. "Will relate to plant stress variables such as soil texture, how much sand, silt, and clay is in the soil, soil salinity, soil pH, how acidic or how basic is the soil, river red, how dependable is the water source that the roots may have access to, surface water availability, wash and drainage, stockpiles, things like this." We were looking at all of these things in 2014. They went back, and after a few more years of gathering data, they created this. You can see in 2013, about 60% of the tamarisk was green. The average green was 60%. By 2014, it had dropped almost 15% to 45%. It kept dropping in 2015. But in 2016, it was pretty disappointing. It went back up to 55%. So what had happened? The beetles ate so much of their food, their population went down. Now we don't have the beetles to control the tamarisk. The tamarisk came back up. So now we're in this cycle where the beetles are going to come back. Now they're starting to move back in larger numbers. So University of Denver ran a whole lot of statistics. We can sit here and go over this, or we can skip this table. But they ran a whole lot of hot-powered statistics in three different departments at the University of Denver to try and make sense of the data we've collected. We go back to the hypothesis. They will follow a downstream pattern. No. These beetles can fly and get blown in any direction, and they're going to bump into another tamarisk tree. It's like a smorgasbord out there for them. So they didn't follow a downstream pattern. It doesn't matter if they've been feeding on the plant longer. Mile marker one is a perfect example. That poor little tree at the kiosk at mile marker one of Little Road has been hit every year since 2004, 2005. It's still there. Trees in West Water Wash got hit one time, and they haven't come back ever. What's going on? We're not real sure. Will be related to plant stress variables. It's not soil texture, it's not salinity, it's not pH, it's not river width, and it's not surface water availability. So we're still trying to understand why and how beetles kill some tamarisk, but not others. We have, this, I think, should be very impressive to you. We have been in two publications with other sets of data from other agencies. Last year, our data was presented in Ecological Applications and Biological Conservation. But better than that, this year, the graduate student that came and worked with me in the summer of 2014 has published a paper and has submitted it to Biological Invasions. That is strictly Grand County data from our mortality studies. It says, under review, it is no longer under review, the paper yesterday was accepted for publication in a peer-reviewed scientific journal that has got quite a reputation as biological invasions. So this is something that you're gonna get a copy of when that is available. Currently, Grand County has the most extensive, most continuous landscape-level datasets for beetle movement, tamarisk response, and tamarisk mortality in the country. We are the ones with the data. We have had systematic county monitoring from 2007 through 2017, 11 years of constant monitoring. The big question is, will our field mortality studies be able to continue in 2018? That is the end. Anybody got any questions?
When will you know if you're gonna have funding for 2015?
Well, I think Tim can address some of that. The grants have dried up a bit.
Yeah, I've got a paper I'll give you one, Diana. This is just what it costs. We've actually had Forest Fire and State Lands, and this will be on your next agenda item, too. They're gonna be able to, you know, give us $2,500, you know, for that. And this shows approximately what it would cost to be able to do the, you know, the program, you know, for that. So we will be bringing and asking, you know, for this right here, you know, if the council would contribute with that right there to be able to continue this along. But right now, it seems like a lot of the data, or a lot of the funding sources has just dried up. And I know Forest Fire and State Lands really wants to see it continue. And Tony brought that up in our board meeting yesterday. Appreciate the opportunity to...
Thank you. I think there's more questions, I think.
Dumb questions. Remind me again, where did the tamarisk come from? Where is its native origin geographically? Why the hell did it get here?
They brought it over here to stabilize stream bank. It's in, actually, I was in Namibia, and it's there.
Namibia?
Yeah, in West Africa. It's there. It's in the Middle East, it's in Uzbekistan, it's in all of those stands up around Russia. It's natural there, and it doesn't grow like this, because it's got natural predators. But when they brought it here, they brought it to stabilize stream banks, then they started using it in windbreaks. And people started liking it, so they put it in their yards because it's a good shade tree. And then everything cut loose. Once there were no predators for it, they didn't bring the predators, none of the insects, none of the creatures here knew what to do with it. So it just grew, unadated. And then it got in the river. Those seeds can blow, when a car goes by, you'll see the seeds, just millions of them dispersed, it's dust. And they can also fall into water and go downstream. So when you look at the river, you'll see a mudflack, and you'll see a blue-green tint to it. That's all a carpet of tamarisk. Those little things are starting up. And if the water doesn't come on up, they'll start growing it full on, they'll start stabilizing that mudflack. Good question, excellent question.
Well, I really appreciate your research, and the tamarisk seems to be a common enemy. So it's good to see that you guys are on the tip of the spear for getting it under control, so I appreciate the work that you're doing.
It's definitely a common enemy in the West right now. Transpires huge amounts of water.
Any further questions? Yes, Rory?
I would just like to tell you thanks for all your studying, and I love them, how they crawl on my neckline. Reach behind and fill them there, enjoy that. I just wanted to let you know that since I've been running jetboats on the river, since we started seeing the tamarisk fading away and the sandbar willa coming up, we've actually seen more beaver on the river than we've ever seen before. Probably, when I started running boats, I'd probably see one or two a day. And right now, I can go downriver and I can show you over 150 of them on every sunset trip that I do. So I think it's kind of a neat way that it's kind of helped them a little bit, too.
Yeah, they do like the willow. They don't eat the tamarisk, that's the bad thing. Wish they would.
Yes, Evan?
With the browning tamarisk, do you know how susceptible to fire they are?
That's a good question. A lot of people think that it's a lot more deadly when it's in the brown state, and that's true. There was a fire ecologist out of New Mexico that I talked to, and it's dangerous green willow. It's got volatile leaves. The big fires around here that have done the damage have been in green tamarisk. That fire picture I showed you, BLM burn, that was green tamarisk. The green actually allows the flame to be able to jump to the small branches easier than when it's just that brown sticky stuff. Because the green is all interlaced, and it'll go right up through that tree. People camp in there thinking that's a nice shady safe spot because it's green, but that tree will ignite very quickly.
There's also liles that are in the green foliage that is highly flammable. So it's a fire hazard, no matter whether it's dead, whether it's brown, whether it's green. Tamarisk is a fire hazard period.
I wouldn't...
Part of the plant, because if it burns off, it can send up new shoots. All those nutrients are sitting on the soil. There's no competition, because everything was burned off, so then the root crown just sends up new shoots, and it wins again. So it's part of the strategy of the plant, to be like that.
In terms of urban fire mitigation, are there methods? Once it starts browning out, would you wanna saw it? Would you wanna do controlled burns? Would you wanna...
Now, you can cut it. You can cut it off. Unless you spray it, it's gonna come back. And they do recommend, and another study out of New Mexico did recommend, if you wanted to get rid of it and cut it off and poison it, don't rip out the roots, because they'll help hold the soil for something like six to 10 years. They'll help hold that soil in place, the root system down will now. So it has an advantage even once you've cut it off and killed it.
With the herbicide, you don't wanna be cutting it and spraying it in the summer, because of all that can volatilize and it'll move on you, so it'll brown out and kill other things. So you wanna do that in the fall or in the winter. And in the summer, when it's starting to brown out, it usually starts browning out about June, and, you know, through there, thinking for the rest of the fall. And if you're gonna burn it, that's the high fire season. So it's just not safe to be burning it at that time of year.
So when did you say it was best, say you had some on your property and you wanted to get rid of it, and you cut it down, and you wanted to use some herbicide on it? You said that was the fall, the best time?
It would be in the fall or up until the time the sap starts coming up. So you're looking up to about the first part of March, from like probably October through March, first part of March would be the good time to be doing the cutting of it and treating it with herbicide. Or you can dig down below the root crown, if you find where the root crown's at, and cut it below the root crown. They've had good success with that at Dinosaur National Monument.
How deep are the root crowns?
Three to four feet. Those root crowns can be down on a big tree, about three to four feet. It's quite a job.
On some of those islands, it could be, because I've seen where it's built up, because it'll start on the downhill side, and then it would start having, you know, build up, and it could be about eight or nine feet down. So really, I don't know how far it's down till you dig down to get it.
Fascinating. Any further questions?
I do, but I'll stop so we can move on.
It is fascinating, I think.
We gave you all a report.
Yes, and we read the report.
The paper report. That was the summary that this was based on.
Yeah.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Presentation on Museum of Moab Renovation Plant, John Foster and Tim Smith.
So what we wanted to do today was just update everyone on a project that we've been working on for some time. This was really precipitated by a desire to renew our exhibits experience for our visitors. And in planning that, we realized that we wanted to rearrange the interior of the museum building a little bit. And so the goals with it were to move the stairway to a less obtrusive position where it was not the first thing you saw when you came in. And also to try to gain a little bit of storage space and get all of the exhibits on one floor, the ground floor, so that everybody could see everything without necessarily having to go upstairs. Such that the upstairs area would become expanded storage for collections and things that were off-exhibits, plus our research library, things like that. So the handout here is just three pages, and it shows a little bit of what we're planning on doing. The first page there is a revision to the ground floor. So you can see the central rectangle there with the X in it is where the stairs currently are. Those would move over to, north by the way, is to the left on this. To the northeast corner is where the stairs would be turned into a U-shaped stairwell. The central exhibits there in the rectangle with the X in it, that would all become exhibits, what is now a stairway area. And you'll notice an exterior exit stairway on the west side of the building. That was something that was necessitated by the code. And the movement of the stairway from a central position required us to put in a second exit for fire safety, since we didn't want everybody on the southwest corner of the building to have to go out in the northeast corner. So that's the ground floor. Oh, I forgot to mention, actually, the other thing there, just to the right of the main rectangle, you have some dotted lines on either side of the number 26 there. That is currently about a 10-foot opening that's between the front exhibit space and the back one that's to the south. We're gonna open that up so that with the stairs being moved out of the way and that being opened up, it'll be one open exhibit space, which will have, it'll allow our exhibits people to better control the flow of how the exhibits are, because things will just be more flexible. The second page there basically shows, again, the stairs in the northeast, what was or what is currently the stairway becoming filled in with mostly library space for the research library. And the external stairway is shown again there on the second floor plan and on a western side view of the building on the third page. This is going to begin, and it'll basically be three phases, starting at the beginning of September. We are gonna need to close for about six months. The first two months of that, we will be moving all of the current exhibits and objects out into temporary storage. That'll take about eight weeks. And then November and December will be the actual remodeling work. We're looking for contractors right now to do that. And then January and February of next year will be the installation of the new exhibits, so that we'll be reopening with a totally new exhibit for everyone beginning of March next year. So I think that's it for what I had. I think you may have had a few points, too.
Just saying, Tim Smith, I'm on the museum board, and I thought you'd be announcing. Hopefully, they've heard at the end of the month, John will be leaving us, him and his wife moving to Vernal, or she'll be up at Dinosaur National Monument. And so anyway, I wanted to say in front of you all, just take a minute and say thanks, that what a great job John has done. The museum is in a stronger position in four years, in just virtually any way you would like to measure it. Financially, scientifically even, his expertise, more collections of things, of artifacts and specimens of interest have come into the museum. And in those small things, staff capacity is much larger than it was with a couple new jobs. That's all been funded through philanthropy. And finally, also wanted to thank the county council for your continued funding support that's been so helpful, bedrock of what keeps us going forward, and particularly Councilman Holiday for now serving on the board and an ex officio status. And finally, just wanted to say, this is something we're all excited about. You have a committed staff and board to really take things up a notch at the museum. This really represents the first real concrete step toward that. You're gonna see a remodeled building, a much more modern and, I think, compelling set of exhibits. And not stopping there, we'll continue to move forward, and hopefully in a manner that does not require increased public funding, and may actually be reduced if we have something that attracts a lot more tourists here, while also having a building and facility that local people can take pride in, is preserving the objects and specimens, use museum lingo that representative of Moab's history. In short, a museum that's worthy of this great landscape that Curtis and others were talking about, and the stories that comprise the history of Moab.
For John, you have done an amazing job at the museum, and so will be missed. I've watched it grow over the last few years, I've been to the different fundraisers. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Any questions on this?
Was there concerns at one point with the roof as well?
We had had some trouble with leaks with the roof a couple of years ago, and Marvin and his crew came over and resealed it, and that seems to have done the trick for stopping that. What we may need to do in the future is repair some of the interior damage that happened as a result of some of those leaks that we got during heavy storms. But at least it hasn't been continuing since it was resealed.
Any other question?
All right. I will see you guys in two weeks again for our mid-year report, too. Thanks.
We are now to the general business action item discussion and consideration. Where I am L, approving proposed easement deed with the groundwater and... item L approving proposed easement deed with the groundwater and two service agencies pending legal review for utilities and access on the property owned by Grand County located on Spanish Trail Arena. Dana.
Hi, Marvin. Thanks for having me. Greg's here in place of Steve who couldn't be with us tonight. And so if you have any questions about the arena or anything, he's been briefed. This little piece is an integral part of our $5 million project that we're going out to bid for hopefully soon. It will provide fire flow to the area, to the whole system. It will, that little dock connection has a big impact throughout the whole valley. It is the site where, where the housing authority wants to put the Wingate Village, would not be able to be served if this piece isn't there. There's, it's important, I do apologize for not coming to you at the same time I did with the arena, because it was such a tiny thing. When you look on a very big map, it just got overlooked. So I do apologize for that. Could have killed that all at once, but anyway. In return, the arena parking lot is not so hot. So we managed to be able to put in 12 feet of new asphalt with a normal trench covering of six. But because the parking lot is in not so great a shape, we can justify giving a 12-foot strip. And it'll serve also as part of the drainage swale that runs through the parking lot and helps shore that up. We will also, he will also be getting another fire hydrant down towards the back of the OKRV park, basically between the indoor arena and the outdoor track. There'll be another fire hydrant back there. And that's the purpose of it. And once it's in there, we won't need to do much to it hopefully. So, you guys have any questions?
Yes, Curtis.
I move to approve the access and utility easement located on properties owned by Grand County as presented and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents following legal review.
Second motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Evan Clapper. Any questions or considerations? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you. I think this is the last one.
We are now on item M, approving a tax exemption request for property owned by Moab Area Community Land Trust. Caitlin Myers.
Hello. So I am addressing you as a private citizen. I'm on the board of the land trust. And as Jaylen gave a brief update earlier, the land trust formally accepted a donation of land of 38 acres in May. And so now we are moving forward with developing it. And so one of the things that we would like to do is get a tax exemption so that we can use the value of that, what we would normally spend on our property taxes to start moving forward with developing. So, yeah.
Question. So I assume there's probably not like a develop, a formal development plan for the land trust property yet?
Not yet. We are kind of doing two things. Jaylen mentioned earlier, we are in the process of writing a development agreement with Mountain Lands Housing Trust up in Park City. They've been really helpful. They're the only other community land trust in the state of Utah. And Scott Wumus, the director, has really kind of paved the way for land trusts in the state. And so we're working on partnering with them potentially to develop on the land. But we're also in the process of drafting an RFP to get a developer to continue to work on the larger master plan.
So I would move to approve the tax exemption for property owned by the Moab Area Community Land Trust located at 2022 Spanish Valley Drive and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Evan Clapper. Any further questions?
Probably worth mentioning, we have an endorsement or a letter of support from our duly-elected Grand County assessor, Debbie Swayze.
Great. I'll call for a vote. All in favor. Passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. Evan? Okay, now we are on item N, adopting proposed ordinance approving the rezone of 1.35 acres of land located at 1146 South Highway 191 from rural residential to highway commercial. Zachariah Levine, it looks like Mary is here.
My hair's not curly enough.
Yes. Not quite as tall.
Quite as tall.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. You actually had your public hearing at your last meeting. So this is just, we have, you made that public policy setup that you, for public notice. We haven't had any extra public information provided to us. I haven't heard of anything happening with you or the council. I just want to give you a little bit of information on the parcel, just so you know that the parcel that, the front of the parcel is actually highway commercial already zoned. And it's the largest part of the parcel. The little tiny piece in the back, 1.3 by acres, I call tiny because there are constrained lands in the back, 30% slopes. And there's also a large wash and, well, it's not a wash, it's a, an easement for drainage off of a spring that's on the property. So the portion of the property that would actually be rezoned is very small. And it only has access off of the highway commercial parcel. So just to give you a little bit of information.
We do have a person that would like to speak to the council, Jerry Clayes.
Should I have a seat here?
Well, you, a seat here or at the?
Whatever's comfortable.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll sit next to Mary.
Well, I... Introduce yourself.
My name's Jerry Clayes. I'm a Grand County resident. And in interest of full disclosure, I do know the landowner, Joyce Robinson. I just wanted to mention my thoughts on this. I have a lot of respect for our housing situation in Grand County and affordable housings. It's an issue not just here, but I mean, anywhere, I think pretty much all over the US. I'd hate to be a young person just starting out today and looking at 300 or $500,000 houses and wondering how the heck you're going to be able to afford to live. And rent's the same thing. It's a big issue. But there's a right place for, for residential housing and there's a right place for affordable housing. And then there are some other places that really don't fit too well. And I think Mary did a really good job of describing this property. It's kind of the back end of a commercial lot. It backs up to a hill. A portion of the property is on the hill. I suppose with enough effort and enough excavation and retaining wells, you could make use of that. But I'd kind of hate to see that to the property too. So in this case, I just wanted to express my thoughts that this property actually is, is much better used for the community as a highway commercial than a rural residential. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And also, once the HDDO overlay is adopted, there's nothing that would stop this parcel from getting that overlay if they chose to go that route. Even if it is highway commercial, it could still ask for that.
It's, it's on the overnight overlay.
They could still ask for that.
Any further questions? Yes?
I, I'd like to make a motion, please. I move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving the rezone of 1.35 acres of land located at 1146 South Highway 191 from rural residential to highway commercial and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Rory Paxman. Any further discussion? Yes?
So I think, I appreciate the comments. And I think, you know, there's a lot of discussion of planning and good planning. And I think the Planning Commission, I appreciate them for their time and effort towards, you know, this important subject of affordable housing. And we've been doing a lot of work on affordable housing lately, moving forward with an assured housing policy. We've got high-density overlays. I think affordable housing is something that everybody is on board with. I think that what this situation reminds me of is getting ahead of an affordable housing issue is really difficult. Playing catch-up is also really difficult. But if we adapt a, you know, a no-net-loss policy, good planning goes out the door. Because then what you're doing is you're just looking for any area to force, you know, residential housing into. And I see that in this case. We've got highway frontage property in what might as well be, you know, maybe not downtown, but it's certainly not out of town. It's in the southern corridor. It's surrounded by commercial property. You know, and I, I think applying that, you know, that paradigm of, you know, get, get an affordable house any way you can get it is really inappropriate when applied to this circumstance because it ignores the facts and that this is a commercial area on highway frontage. And so I would just, I support this. And I would say that I think it's in the best interest of the community and this body to continue to look towards these tools and measures that we can take to get affordable housing in residential areas. And to not let that muddy the waters when we're, in what's my opinion, is correcting an error in the land use code, which the previous document that we had during the public hearing more clearly kind of pointed that out, that this is more of a correction of an improper zoning application. And so here we have an opportunity to right that wrong, appropriately plan this area for commercial activity and applications and move forward.
How many I know are there of these split zoning lots, would you say, in the county?
In this particular area, you're going to see the majority of all of the corridor having some of those split lots. We've corrected them as, as you, as you, even with your, with this council, we've corrected three or four of them. But as it goes down the valley and it gets to, oh, what road would that be? Probably the Sage Creek area or the Sage Road right there, as it turns off to go to Sage. From there on, they're pretty much the same. They're, it's to the end of each lot. The highway commercial ends there. But that first corridor right here, right there, as we leave the city, it just wasn't well taken care of to make sure that the whole entire lot was a part of commercial. Partly, I think, because it was already doing commercial, they just didn't even recognize that maybe it went that far back. Because at the time, when this all went in, we didn't have the survey work we have now. We didn't have the computers we have now that would show that kind of information to them. And it was old man John Keogh that walked down that lane and said, we're going to make this zone to here. And he was our surveyor, but you know, we just didn't have, we don't have, didn't have it that time. The kind of equipment that we have now, it would have alleviated a lot of that problem.
It's like a lot of it was just a survey issue.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discussion?
I would just say that I am not disagreeing with what Curtis was saying, but the, with the work that is going on in other areas with the high-density overlay, I'm hesitant to start changing things from one designation to another while that work is still in process. So not to say that, that this might not make sense in the future, but I'm not ready to do it today.
Anything further? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of the motion? Five in favor, all opposed. Two. Motion passes five to two. Jaylen Hawks and Evan Clapper in a po, opposition.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Adopting proposed ordinance to adjust 2018 wages for cost of living for the Grand County elected officials. Chris, I do not see Chris.
So it's not visible tonight. He's working at his place. But he said that, he thought that you guys had all the information that you needed from the public hearing.
Are there any questions? Patrick?
I'd, I'd move to approve the attached ordinance establishing and affixing the salaries of elected statutory officers of Grand County, excluding Grand County council members, providing a 2% cost of living adjustment for elected officials except the county council to be retroactive to January 1st, 2018 through July 2nd, 2018. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Patrick, my motion, do I have a second?
I just don't think you made the 3rd July, so I have to go down to 18. I think that was either 4th or 1st.
Oh, wow. Okay. So retroactive to January 1st, 2018.
Discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? Seven to zero. We are now at item P. Adopting proposed ordinance to adjust the 2018 wages for cost of living for Grand County council members. We have the information. We have a motion. Patrick?
I move to approve the attached and ordinance amending ordinance number 556, dated 2017, and establish compensation paid to the county council members, providing a 2% cost of living adjustment for the county council to be retroactive to January 1st, 2018. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Jaylen. Discussion.
Are we supposed to recuse ourselves on this one?
You know, y'all must think, isn't it funny we have to vote?
I don't know how this works.
We, we don't have to. We don't have to.
Any other?
Make sure the fiscal impact is noted in the motion so there's context.
$1,600.
We're worth a lot, aren't we?
All, any further discussion? Yeah, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes seven to zero. Approving 2018 certified tax rate. Diana.
So it'll actually be an ordinance. It's not listed on the agenda that way, but I have two separate ordinances. The property values, as you see, this year are up substantially. A lot of that had to do with, the assessor did their five-year commercial reappraisals. And those values came in, sorry, hurry. 15 and a half percent drop in the certified tax rate this year based on that new growth of $70 million. If you guys have any questions about the, the process, the, you know, the, the rate-setting process begins with adopting the budget for 2018. So we are actually going to collect this money this year. The values of real personal and centrally assessed property is used. And then you back out the Board of Equalization adjustments, which is a average adjustment that our BOE has every year. You times that by the collection rate, which we have a very high collection rate, 94.74%. And it is, it's very good. Chris does a great job over there. And the new growth is also taken out of that number. And we can, even though we use in the formula, the, the value less that new growth, we still get to take the rate on that new growth. So it's kind of a one-time, it's a one-time kind of bonus that we get from new growth. But it is used in the, in the rate-setting process. Any questions? It's very, it's a complex process, but I work very closely with the Tax Commission and the other entities that we also collect for. and the other entities that we also collect for. School district, the fire department, cemetery.
It is very confusing.
I thought I saw it in here, but I'm not seeing it right now. Does, does it show the last tax rate?
So on the, these are really blurry. I apologize for that. But on the, the colored, this one, that's colored on it.
Uh huh, the second colored, yeah.
Second one.
Yeah, the left-hand side, the left-hand green comma, that's the prior year tax rate, which is .002278. And this year it will be .0023675. So the, the rate is higher, but it's because the, the values are higher also. So it actually gives us a 15% decrease in the rate amount. So everyone will be paying that much less taxes.
So 15% tax rate decrease?
Right. To collect the same amount of money that we have what you do.
Because all those tourist lanes bring in.
Any further questions? Yes, Jaylen?
Well, it's, these are ordinances that we're going to adopt, correct?
Resolution.
Oh, they are resolutions. I thought you said it was ordinances at the beginning. Anyway, I don't see any proposed resolutions.
It's this one, it's in your pocket. It says Utah State Tax Commission at the top.
That's 97.
It's right after the last.
Okay, okay. All right, good.
And there's one for all the county operations, the general operations, library, the library bond, collecting and assessing. And then we have a separate one for the Grand County General Obligation Bond, which is the courthouse debt. We have to do two separate resolutions.
See the two?
Okay.
The tax rate for the county.
They don't look like actual resolutions.
I know.
They're not out, but they, they print out of the Tax Commission website, so they're, they're all uniform, have the correct numbers in there.
Any further questions? Did we have a motion? No, we did not.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the proposed resolutions adopting final 2018 Grand County certified tax rate as presented for Grand County Operations, Library Assessing and Collecting, and General Obligation Bond Debt, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Any second? Seconded by a motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Rory Paxman. Any further discussion?
I just have one other question, just curious. The 5% you don't collect, how's that written off?
It's not written off, but we continue to collect for five years on each property. It'll show in, as revenue in the future years under redemption. So, and after five years, if the property tax is not paid, then we sell the property.
Okay.
But.
Due for closes on.
We haven't had to do that yet in 12 years. I hope it doesn't happen.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, I call for a vote. All in favor? Passes seven to zero. We are now on approving proposed letter to support Representative John Curtis regarding Labyrinth Canyon. I have spoken with John Curtis on the phone and I thought it was a great idea when I looked at the Emory Counties, how they were going to support and, you know, how in their public lands. I thought, well, let's make it the same on the other side. But after talking to John Curtis, this is not going to serve him, nor it might even hurt his process, and I don't see it at this point of helping us or making any sense of stability for that Labyrinth Canyon. So I would like to postpone or just drop the letter. If that's okay. Yeah? Okay.
I'll make a motion to indefinitely postpone approving proposed letter of support to Representative John Curtis regarding Labyrinth Canyon.
Second?
Indefinitely.
A motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussion?
Just a brief discussion. And Mary, you and I spoke about this.
Is this the one I changed or the one I originally what?
I don't know.
I'd have to look at it.
The Emory County Lands Bill is something that is a process that's been, and it works for around a decade roughly. And Grand County knows that those types of processes, like the Public Lands Initiative, are often very bloody and consensus is tough to reach. I, I think it's a good call to not kind of jump in on the tail end of a, of a decade-long process, but I think it's really important, you know, the first line says, "The Grand County Council writes you today in support of the Emory County Public Land Management Act, HR 5727, and wilderness designation for Labyrinth Canyon." How many of these seven representatives of the people of Grand County have looked through the Emory County Lands Bill?
It's not easy.
Yeah.
It's very difficult. I've looked through it, so yeah, it was, it was.
It's, it's a large process, but the, the point I want to make is, is that there were phone calls and discussions of a local special interest group pushing for this in Labyrinth Canyon months ago. I received calls, received calls from Congresswoman Curtis, and that's the Southern Utah Wilderness Alliance. And that's something that, you know, I want to express really frustrates me is it really bothers me when a special interest group treats this body to do their business and things like this come out of nowhere. And especially concerning an area that 10-mile road, there's no mention of 10-mile road in here, and that was one of, if you took three or four of the bloodiest subjects of the Public Lands Initiative, Labyrinth Canyon was one of them because it's not wilderness. There's a very well-traveled road. Now, the wilderness designation on the Emory County side is a long ways away from the county seat. The Labyrinth Canyon from Green River or Huntington or those areas, it's a long ways away from the, the people that inhabit that county. Labyrinth Canyon on our side is very close to us and it's treasured by many people. And so these are things that need to be thought out and, and discussed and deliberated on. And so I won't go on anymore because I know you're cringing, Mary, but things like this to piggyback on a decade-long process while we're ignoring the whole other side of the issue, I don't think is good business for Grand County. So I yield my time.
Any further discussion? None needed. I said, "None needed." None needed. Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of postponing the letter indefinitely? Seven to zero. Okay, we are on S. We, I wanted, need to, I can no longer be on the Cemetery District Board because my son got a job working there, so I need to move. Evan said, Evan does the planning commission on Tuesday night. We were sharing that, so he, he was willing to swap, so I'll go to the planning commission and he'll go. He got the better end of the DLR meeting, usually only lasts an hour. And they're very, very rarely contentious.
Playing your cards.
So that's, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Okay. All in favor? Sorry, Mary. I've put hard on that board. Remember when that?
It's very simple, it's planning, you know? Everybody's planning on dying. Sorry, Mary, where is the Cemetery District Office?
It's at Sunset Memorial Gardens.
It's right there.
It's right there. It's that little, when you pull in, it's a shop or house or office right there.
Great.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Item T, renewing resolution number 2018-3130, resolution declaring the existence of a drought emergency in Grand County, Utah pursuant to UCA 17-8-7. Such resolution originally adopted January 18th, 2018. Item U, ratifying the chair's signature on a letter of support for the Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Grant application. Item V, ratifying the chair's signature on a letter of support to the Governor's Office of Economic Development for the Moab Free Health Clinic to submit a proposal to enterprise zone nonprofit program for potential tax credits. Item W, ratifying the chair's signature on thank you letters regarding HR 5895, Energy and Water Legislative Branch, and Military Construction and Veteran Affairs Appropriation Act 2019. Item X, approving proposed contract amendment to the Children's Justice Center Program. Item Y, approving proposed contract agreement with the Utah Department of Health, Disease Control and Prevention for the Stepping on Fall Prevention Program in the amount of up to $2,500 through July 31st, 2018, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Curtis, do I have a second? Seconded by Rory Paxman. Is there any discussion on any of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I call for a vote. All in favor? Accepting consent agenda. Passes seven to zero. Wait, this was, yeah, we had one item that it wasn't consent. Read on everything. Okay, we are now moving to calendar item and public notice.
All right, excuse me. For July calendars, tomorrow, July 4th, county offices will be closed. On July 13th through the 16th is the NACO Annual Conference, which is in Nashville. And then you guys had talked about moving the meeting to the 18th. Did you? I said you guys had talked about moving the meeting to the 18th.
Yeah, that's what we need. So we, I proposed that. I've heard back from, I think, everyone, even Curtis. And if I remember right, Curtis wanted to move it. Patrick wanted to move it.
The Health Department member.
Jaylen preferred it to stay the same. Did you weigh in, Greg?
When were you moving it to?
The next day.
The 18th?
Yeah.
And we're just doing all this stuff on the 18th.
There's not that much. In fact, 7 o'clock, the, well, the recreation.
Immediate the city change.
The city, immediately the city change.
What time are we proposing for the 18th?
I was just gonna, I was thinking, just keep it the same, 4 o'clock, but I don't think the plane arrives back at 6 o'clock in the evening on the 17th.
Just gonna create a problem. I was supposed to give a quarterly update with Castle Valley Town Hall. That's the date of their meeting. What about, what, the following week on?
Let's do it on the holiday.
Yeah, what about the following week on a, on a Wednesday or Thursday?
Let's, we need to find out for Briny, how much is that going to throw the?
Because then we'd still have, we'd still have a week, sorry, Mary, we'd still have a week off before the next council meeting. So the 26th doesn't look on the calendar like it's, there's a lot going on.
I'll be unavailable the 26th.
Let's keep it within the 17th, 18th.
I think we need to keep it within the same week. I think it did, I think, because we switch every November, first meeting in November is always the Wednesday because of the election. So this is not an unknown precedence to do, is to move our meeting from first, third, you know, first Wednesday to the first Wednesday or the, so, anyway.
What about a daytime on the 18th?
How, what time?
1:00.
Yes, I mean, noon or 1:00.
Would that free you up in time to?
Yeah, but the, the meeting is at 6:30.
Okay. So there. We could have it at an earlier time.
Yeah, that's, I was planning on traveling on the 18th, so if we could do it sooner, then I could, that would be better for me.
Well, the watershed partnership is going on at 1:00, but if you miss it, it's not good to miss, but it's not a problem. All right, and the Budget Advisory Board, if they're not going on right now, right? Do they call up?
We'll be starting by the day.
You'll be starting soon.
But that, that'll be over by 10:30 or something. We could do it.
That's only in our half, isn't it, Jaylen?
It's probably gonna be longer and a half.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. What about 3? I mean, if we can't get Greg out of here in three and a half hours, then you could still make your whatever meeting at 1:00.
Well, is the watershed?
Oh, no, because that interferes.
Yeah, missing the watershed partnership or working around that, if that's doable, that would be ideal midday, then you can get a hold of it.
Yeah.
And I could, you know, I, I could get a hold of Artie and ask him to communicate with us what went on at that meeting. I mean, if we're not represented at that meeting, we're not the key players. There's a lot more, more key players in that watershed partnership.
Nothing against watershed, Rose.
Nothing at all.
Soundbite.
So what, what, what were we thinking?
Let's do 1:00 once. If we need to change Tuesday at the regular time, then let's go Wednesday at 1:00.
Well, if your flight gets out at 6:00, it can be your 6:30. Never mind.
I wish we were flying into Ohio.
Because that, Downey County Council, could you inform them?
All right, let's do it.
Appreciate you guys.
No, we'll be on the.
1:00?
Be nice. 1:00, 1:00 on the 18th.
What is my calendar?
Okay.
1:00. Well, we can all pull in.
Yeah.
That'd be interesting. Okay. So 1:00 PM on July 18th, correct?
I'll, I'll email the watershed partnership and tell them that we won't have representation on that day.
Okay.
And for some reason, because I think in the past, the Solid Waste Special Services District took 3rd July off, they are having a meeting at 4:00 on the 12th.
Are we on that week now? Did we, okay, the library has rescheduled for July 16th at 5:30. Oh, and the Sand Flats has been rescheduled for July 12th. That was an old one from early June.
Okay, where are we? So July 19th at 1:30 is the Performance Review Committee meeting. July 24th is Pioneer Day, offices will be closed. Any other updates for July? For August, looks like the only thing is August 14th is, you guys have another joint city-county council meeting at 6:00 PM, and that's going to be at the city chambers. Any updates for August?
So is that working on 14th? We come here for a meeting, go over there and come back?
We don't have a meeting on the 14th.
We don't have a meeting on the 14th.
Oh, okay, so this is just separate meetings.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, 30th on the 7th.
Special events, there are none in July for August. August 11th through the 12th is the U100. That's a. That's a, I think that's a trail running event. August 24th through the, through September 14th, Moab Music Festival.
Trail running? Trail running?
Yeah.
In August.
Is that a one-day event?
Yeah.
And employment opportunities, airport landslide operations technician closes July 13th, prosecutorial assistant, that closed on Friday. EMT basic closes July 31st, paramedic closes July 31st, facilities maintenance labor closes July 6th, Grand County, or Sheriff's Office Assistant Food Service Manager in the jail closes July 31st, corrections officer, July, closes July 31st, patrol deputy closes July 31st, communications dispatch closes July 31st, noxious weed control technician closes July 6th. Also, facilities maintenance technician closes July 31st, technical inspector, umtre liaison closes July 31st, and weed technician grant-funded closes July 31st. What do I got?
We do not have any public hearings or need for unclosed sessions, is that the answer? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Curtis West, seconded by Patrick. All in favor?
All right. You don't dangle that out there. Hey, Patrick, I've got a novelty item. I played on your son's co-ed, South 14, probably sounds good, but you didn't win and put Team Tram all over the ground, but they're nice. Yeah, I figured someone with last name Tram might as well. Maybe you don't want to wear that around.